Workshop, welcome everybody this beautiful day. Again, we all need to remember to sit close to our microphones and and speak into them loudly. Call the roll please.
Yes.
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 Thank you. Need a motion to approve today's meeting agenda?
Salute.
Second.
Any discussion about the agenda, our single item? If not, call the roll please.
Shot?
Yes.
Fine.
Yes.
Well.
Thank you. As you know, we have one item on our budget, our meeting today, we it's fiscal year two thousand twenty four budget work session. So I will turn this over to Suzie and and Sven to lead us through this discussion.
So I believe Suzie is going to walk us through the infamous budget memo that she puts together that translates budgets to English for us. So.
Okay, well, I don't know, like, there's some things in there that.
And we'll tag team.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right.
Give me a signal when you want me to butt in. Oh, yeah.
Okay. All right, so the for fiscal year twenty twenty four, and this is after um the state decreased the rollback. Um, the general fund revenues are projected to be four million, four hundred fifty eight thousand, two hundred thirteen dollars. And the expenditures um will be four million, three hundred eighty six dollars or three hundred eighty six thousand, one hundred ninety seven. Um, that's an anticipated surplus of seventy two thousand, but um there are some other issues with that that Sven will discuss. So I will, I will kind of move on from there. Um. So the general fund revenues, even with the rollback decrease with with the taxable evaluations that increased um as of January first, twenty twenty two, it's an increase around seventy seven thousand in the general fund. Um, the valuation increase, the taxable valuation increased from approximately a hundred and seventy four thousand to around a hundred or a hundred and seventy three million to a hundred and eighty three million. Um, that's about a nine point four million dollar increase in the taxable valuation. Um, that doesn't include any of the um recent assessment changes. Um, there the charges for services, um, there hasn't been any charges for services like garbage fees haven't increased. Sewer fees are on a schedule to increase, um, but barbecue needs to be about twenty thousand dollars more. And that's just because um more, you know, additional um business pickup um schedules, additional housing, um, additional like charge for services for extra pickups, things like that. Um, McCree Center receipts are expected to remain about the same. They had increased for a couple of years. And now I think they're they're kind of going to plateau for a little bit, but um there could be some other increases with um program costs since we'll be adding a full time rent coordinator, um, building permit receipts, expected gen- generate around seventy five thousand. Um, that's continuing like with home improvement projects and construction, things like that. And then airport charges for services will increase around eleven thousand due to increase in the hangar rent. Um, we're also expected to increase the airline energy, not just because of the um increase, the franchise fee from two to four percent, but just because of an increased use, increased um population, increased, you know, residential units and also the mid-American will increase as well because of that hotel motel, um, probably about the same, around eighty nine thousand. There was a request that the fire service charges be changed um for the property owners, but we have not added that to the budget. So that could be discussed and like amended if we need to do that. Um, expenditures, um, this is the third year for for wages. This is the third year for the Teamster and Ass me contracts, and those increases will be four percent along with the other um department heads and most of the part time people too. Um. We will transfer a hundred thousand from the Tiff Fund and fifty thousand from local option sales tax to continue the community and economic development department. And then we're also going to transfer forty thousand um from local option sales tax to partially fund the new marketing coordinator position. And the remainder will come from um three percent of the hotel motel tax that we keep. Uh, another big expenditure in the general fund, um, the property casualty insurance is estimated at a like seventeen and a half percent increase. And that's just because for one thing, the natural disasters that are occurring, more claims cause everyone's insurance to go up. And also um with building costs increasing, they re- revalued like the buildings because if we had to replace the building, it would cost significantly more than it had. Um, so the other otherwise department has have attempted to keep their operating expenditures about the same, except for some increases in like wages uh due to the four percent increase and then utilities.
Um, you want me to? Do number three?
Yes.
Okay. Um, so salary wise, um, both of the union contracts are at four percent and we're looking at just uh uh applying that across the board to all salary employees as well. Um, and I might at this time ask Chief Vaughn to come up for uh part of the next discussion. Um, so obviously uh current uh sustainability of budget and future outlooks of budget are not great. Um, and one thing that we as uh not only departments uh administration with police department, but council as well have been talking about for a number of years is uh whether or not we need to continue our dispatch service within uh the Perry Police Department and transitioning that service to uh Dallas County Dispatch uh since uh it's kind of a a double dipping there a little bit as far as redundancy of services. So this year, working with Eric, uh, I believe it's his recommendation and my recommendation and the budget presented uh to not include uh a Perry dispatch service uh and transition that to Dallas County Dispatch. So um right now there's six full time employees within our dispatch. Um, the plan would be to retain two of those employees uh as a records manager and then kind of a deputy records manager. Um, just because there's still be uh, I would say, work to do and records to keep and helping with that transition over to Dallas County's dispatch service. Um, also within that, um, looking at that budget in the future, um, this budget includes an additional police officer uh for the department as well as uh that, as Suzie mentioned, uh recreation coordinator type position. Um, so this was kind of a way to help keep that budget under control. Um, this year, otherwise, we would have been looking at uh some other hard decisions. Um, also by having two fewer uh full time employees, uh I think that was about twenty five cents, twenty six cents uh less on the letting rate itself. Uh, so we were able to keep the letting rate consistent. I know Chief Vaughn has been working with uh Sheriff Infante and uh his staff down there at the county on a lot of the logistical uh conversations and exactly how it will work. Um, I've had a few conversations with council already just to kind of gauge uh perspectives. Um, you know, I think one of the and one of the common questions has been, how will this affect our service? And I don't really anticipate any negative effect on police response and police service, and it will actually likely uh speed up and in and improve response time for uh Dallas County EMS. Because as it is right now, if somebody calls nine one one and is transferred to Perry Dispatch and Perry Dispatch answers and somebody needs an ambulance, uh Perry Dispatch would get all that information and then end up transferring that call to Dallas County to regurgitate that same information because Dallas County doesn't allow other dispatch centers to dispatch their ambulances. So if anything, service to residents uh would probably uh, you know, as a whole, increase a little bit, but majority on that nine one one for ambulance service. So that's kind of.
About fire dispatch.
Uh, so that would a call would go to uh Dallas County uh Communication Center. And it would be dispatched from there uh just as it would be from Perry. So.
And yeah, Dallas County has the ability right now, and actually Dallas County is working on a uh automated fire dispatching service or system, I guess I should say. Um. There's several larger departments um in Iowa that have that similar system. So they punch all the information about whatever's happening and it actually has a uh computerized response that pages out the appropriate fire service. So that's one of those things too that we would have that ability, so we would still have to do the kind of the action. So it kind of falls in there. And like I said, Dallas County already has that ability um with fires or incidents per outside the city limits, but are still within the fire district.
Do you want to talk kind of about your thoughts and decision making process on this as well?
Yeah, um. So uh I I didn't know how long we'd get that or dispatch. It's been a invaluable asset now to our department, to the city. Well, with that said, we're looking at a lot of aging equipment um at the police department in regards to dispatching. Um, we have two major consoles that we use uh for the uh for dispatch, um, those systems are roughly fifteen to twenty years old. And we've, they work right now with our current uh digital system that the county has upgraded to in the past uh six years. But um really concerned about the cost to replace those units. I have a feeling that, you know, or kind of a fear that any day that those teams get a lot uh replace those units that we probably talked a minimum of like a hundred thousand dollars for the piece. That's one of the big things, um, and those are the consoles themselves, uh most of the digital uh radio systems are now more computer based. It's almost like a, you know, your personal computer at home, a little upgraded by a long stretch. But um in the software and everything that goes along with it, you know, we have service contracts that cuts out. So those payments would increase and that cost would increase that way. There's other uh usually generally, we have one dispatcher we do at a time. Where if we transition to the county, um, there would be three, possibly four dispatchers working at a time. So if we had a major incident, um, like we're seeing in Perry throughout the country, that they would be able to handle that volume of calls uh in a better manner and a more efficient manner than it would currently have during the direction. We had one dispatcher working, um, Lori Riley was our communication supervisor, stepped in and assisted, um, did a great job. But even that day, you know, my administrative assistant Emily was also taking field and phone calls. So I mean, that's three, three nights that were uh everybody answering phone calls, trying to dispatch and trying to get units where they need to be that day. So um and that was a big handful where um like I said, three to four at the dispatch level there, even a fifth seat if needed during emergency situations at that time. Um, uh, there's also going to be, you know, some, some transition in the next couple of years with staff. Probably with uh myself and the communications supervisor Riley coming close to retirement. Also, I think this is also a a good time to make this transition. This is just a matter of time before we transition this way. That way Lori and I appear on staff to assist in this process also instead of to people that might have not have the knowledge to to make that transition easier. We've kind of had this conversation over the years with uh the sheriff, um, um, and obviously my concern is what this is going to cost me. We're not having dispatch here. Are we going to have to pay for those services when we transition to the county? Um, right now, um, speaking with sheriff doesn't appear that that's going to cost us any. So there will be some transition things that we have to upgrade. But as far as like paying for a salary for a dispatcher or anything like that, that's okay. Um, we are working, currently working on the ability to have Dallas County uh activate our storm sirens because that's one of the things that is one of our major concerns. Um, so that would be an incurred, an incurred cost, uh which I think is roughly between three and four thousand dollars when I'm being told. Um, so that's one of those costs, and then we will need to have access to uh their records management system. And so we will have to pay a yearly fee to have that have that access. Um, and that access is roughly around two thousand dollars.
So significant.
Yeah. So obviously, like Sven said, that we're probably going to need at least two people or staff to help with this transition and help maintain records. So there's a lot of stuff that goes on behind the scenes that uh you know, the officers don't really have time, the ability to do as far as maintaining records, filing records, um, making sure we're recording our uh our crime reports to the federal government, um making sure those uh the reports that we do uh generate get out to the people that need them, DHS, county attorney, that type of thing, acts or reports, everything like that, as well as they help us, uh Laura really helps us on kind of the IT side in our department, must maintain a lot of our uh video systems, body cameras, interview systems as well as in car systems and that type of thing, as well as making sure that um those videos that pertaining to our records as part of our concern, where they can get transferred. We will probably evaluate that. Keep those two people on, uh, this the idea right now, and then we'll evaluate that probably next year to true that that is adequate. See what uh you need to do. Um, I guess the other thing too is a lot of uh we get money from the nine one one board, not only from our local nine one one board with the state nine one one board. A lot of that money goes to pay for uh projects like the radio. Uh, like uh our computer systems to help radiators, uh, our nine one systems and things like that, as well as training for all the dispatchers. The money that we receive from state that gets circled out from state to the local level has reduced. Likewise, the money that's coming from local pay. So um, that's another issue with funding dispatch too. There's a lot of other stuff.
And you know, I think we, one of the big
while we're still working through that, you know, it probably works to a lot. Um, I don't really like getting like Sven said earlier, I don't see the public probably will notice a different uh difference in how things are dispatched. Uh, will be definitely some changes for officers and our staff, the fire department. But I really don't think they'll see that difference. We're working through some things right now kind of with, you know, we have take phone calls after hours and direct people to the street department or you know, the water or wastewater or something like that. So we're working through some of those issues too. Obviously, we'll have to relay those type of context to the county. Uh, the county is also working on some procedures um countywide to take this process go not only smoother, but very careful, but have a little better policy on radio traffic and the duties of their dispatch.
Now, it's gonna say this, like I mentioned earlier, this is something that we've been talking about for a number of years for the uh more experienced members of council and the mayor, but um you know, really, when it comes down to it with budget issues going on uh in the not so sunny outlook on future budgets. Um, this is really one of those services that we are uh you know, we are utilizing our budget to provide this service. Um, and the county is taxing on those same properties to provide the same service. So um it just makes a lot of sense uh with the current times we're in um to really kind of try and uh consolidate the services that make sense to consolidate uh that will have um, you know, a small, as small of an impact on the quality of service as we can. So uh this is one of those areas and I think uh probably both chief and I have not uh taken this process lightly, you know, obviously this affects people and uh that's not something that we enter into flippantly or lightly or anything like that. I mean, these are people's jobs and lives and things like that. So um I know Eric has been having conversations with his dispatchers, just, you know, that this is probably going to be coming up, and I think uh they understand that, they understand the big picture. So um, you know, I wanna, I wanna give a good amount of credit to Chief Vaughn for his leadership through this and having to have those difficult conversations with his staff. I know that's never an easy thing and uh not only the dispatch staff, but also his officers uh and Emily uh all will have to kind of change the way they've always done things. So uh a lot of change, but I think it's all uh for the best, uh, and I think it'll enable the department to probably uh accomplish more. I know one of the big um issues and gaps that uh chief and I don't want to speak for him, but um I think in our conversations, you know, what it in, what is the biggest thing that you need? Or what's the biggest issue and thing you're missing or want to improve on? And that is investigations and being able to have somebody more dedicated uh to those investigations. So I think with adding this uh officer position, that will be probably more dedicated, if not an internal applicant to be the detective or an external applicant to be dedicated to uh you know, probably improving that turnaround time on those investigations and being able to uh manage all of our investigations. So that's kind of the goal for uh that new officer position is to really be focused on investigations. So I don't know if you add anything to that.
Nope, I and like Sven said, that's the difficult part of this decision that affects people's jobs. So yeah, obviously, we had a, I had to sit down with each one of them individually and kind of talk to them about just the possibility of this. Um, and if it, you know, obviously, this decision would be a lot easier to listen to that. They're they're very good uh employees that have our dispatch crew is 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 really good, right? I I age lose idiot. But I think for your future financially, or I think for some other uh benefits as far as, you know, I think possibly having an investigator saving money down the long, long road uh for the cost of future equipment. And also um the ability to have a little better conversation, uh sharing of information, sheriff's office and the rest of the agencies in Dallas. Benefit us all.
Will there be an opportunity for them to transfer maybe to the county?
Um, there's, uh, they'll be able to uh apply, I know there's um possibility adding one to positions at the sheriff's office at the dispatch center right now. So we've been having discussions about that possibility. I'm also been working on contacts for other agencies in the area in case they do want to transfer or maybe go to a different dispatch center, whether it be in Boone or Green County or even Old Town West Palm, West Palm handles like West Des Moines, Urberville, Clive, Milwaukee, it's Norwalk, Windsor Heights. So yeah, just a few. So um if if they want to transfer to go on to that, there's some other opportunities, obviously, uh within the county too, within as far as change and the sheriff said, be welcome to five or, you know, we'd also give them good recommendations or any other, anything else they accept.
I have a question.
Yes.
First of all, apologize for being late. Uh, is there a contract then that we sign with the county? What will get them from in the future when they have a bunch of short calls saying, hey, we're going to charge you more for this services and doing these things, is there any kind of guarantee we have? It sounds like it's right now, we're just switching over and there's no real pause.
Right, right. There hasn't. I agree in that, that was one of my biggest fears also. I can't remember if I said that earlier, but um right now, there's no suggestion there's going to be a contract or anything. As I said, they dispatch the rest of Dallas County minus Milwaukee and those metro cities that have leaked into Dallas County. Um, and they don't charge any of those other entities. You know, I would think if if they moved to that, they would have to do that countywide. I mean, they couldn't just come after their parents and say, you know, it's going to cost you a lot of that, but.
Yeah. Um, I I don't know that any city has a contract for communication services, but some cities would have a twenty eighty agreement for police protection. So uh, I want to say it's Redfield, probably Dexter.
Redfield Dallas Center.
Okay. Um, and then obviously Minburne and um, I don't know if they actually have contracts or not, but um they have actual contracts that they pay a little bit to have protection within their city limits. So, but that doesn't include communication services. And I don't think any community that does not have dispatch would pay for fire dispatch service either. So uh, you know, that's another aspect of it too, is every town has a fire department, so.
I I'm just, yeah, I, right now, that that's not, we don't have a contract right until we don't need one. Um, you know, have good relationship with the sheriff, but just what he's saying, uh, but that's not going to happen anytime soon, so. Yeah, I think if if they were to do that, they'd have a piece of major changes, you know, countywide.
Any other questions, comments? I guess so, as we discussed, the goal would be to make this transition July first. Um, and Eric will be continuing to work with Sheriff's Department on that. Um, as well as, um, you know, one of the, one of, as he discussed, one of the first things he and I talked about was um how can we support those uh team members that uh are on dispatch now of either helping them transition to the county or another agency or another career field as well? So um, I think that's in this transition, the people aspect is definitely one of our priority. The people aspect is definitely one of our priorities and helping them, supporting them how we can. Uh, to get through a career transition. So um, you know, uh it. Hard on chief and I to have to make these kinds of recommendations and I'm sure not easy for council, but. Um, I think we are both definitely keeping in mind that. Human aspect that this is affecting people. So um, we're gonna be doing what we can. Any other questions, comments? Um, so yeah, and so kind of in balancing that, uh adding that police officer, hopefully. Having more of a focus on investigations. Um, and then. This year kind of balancing out that recreation coordinator, which the uh, I would say it's three year. Goal for that position is to be financially self-sufficient through personal training, group training and then. Uh, other programs and activities. So.
Is there also an opportunity to, to sell a lot of the activity and appointment?
Possibly. I don't know what, I know that there's some other systems out there like it. Uh. Cause we had talked about purchasing some of them for parts. So uh, yeah, I don't know if they, I don't know. I don't, I don't know how much they'd be worth, but.
We can keep them in a closet and put them on eBay.
Yeah.
I think, what was it? Something for the wastewater plant? We had to buy a controller on eBay because it was so, yeah. So it's a thing and we've done it for other stuff. So. But.
Maybe it would be like an old Apple computer that someday it would be worth a lot of them. So. But yeah, if you guys have any other questions that they've come about. Feel free to get ahold of me, send me an email or whatever. Do my best to answer your questions. Yeah.
I think biggest thing is at uh, and I think when I spoke with everybody, everybody asked. How will this affect our citizens? Uh, I think everything that we're learning from. Uh, conver- chief's conversations with the county and what we understand is that we really won't see a difference other than. The person answering the phone is gonna be uh out by Adele instead of uh eight oh. You know, one, nine one, eight oh one grand, nine oh one, nine oh eight, nine oh eight. So, uh, so yeah.
And during the day that we still uh, you know, have like still have staff available, they'll be answering our administration calls. Just like always, um, be able to take walk-in traffic um during the day and after hours and work on a system to. If people come into the lobby that they're able to connect with dispatch and dispatch, make contact with officers if they're not there.
And I'm able to do fingerprints and things like that.
Yeah, yeah, we might start restricting those a little bit just to the uh more business hour, but yeah. Hopefully to keep up all the services we have.
And then, good point on that phone number. The administrative phone line will be programmed. Uh, like between probably three thirty PM and seven AM. That will go to Dallas County Dispatch. Um, so that administration line will even be answered twenty-four seven as well. So. Um, no matter what, somebody will be answering either the four, six, five number or the nine one one number. So. They, I think Jim's, but up to the mayor if you wanna. Let Jim ask a question.
Go ahead.
Microphone. Please state your name and address for the record.
Jim Caulfield of the Perry News. Just curious whether maybe the larger question was addressed at all, which would be. You know, given the. Expensive of, you know, municipal police department. I mean, is this the first step towards maybe just turning, turning this into the. A sheriff's substation?
No. My opinion, no.
So you, you wouldn't recommend?
No.
Cause keeping up with the other technology is expensive too, I'm sure.
Yeah, absolutely. Um, but I think the, the service uh. You get from a local police department, I don't think, and nothing against the sheriff's office, but to have the services that you want. Twenty-four hours a day and that this city needs um would be difficult and probably more expensive. And honestly, the volume of calls. And there's nights that Dallas County Sheriff's Department only has one person covering the county. So. That would be problematic probably too. So.
They obviously could, yeah, that's the way they could do it with their staff.
Any other questions? Okay.
Thanks, chief.
Thank you. Don't mean to continue on with the special revenues now.
Please continue.
Okay. All right. Next step is special revenue funds. Um, these are everything but the general fund. It's a road use tax spend. Which funds um, street department and traffic signals, storing the ball. Um, we expect to have revenues of. A million ninety thousand. Um, we budgeted expenditures are at one point three million because usually we don't spend it all. But there's a fund balance just in case we need to dip into that somehow. Um, plus. Going by the state's recommendation, usually get more than what they estimate beginning of the year. Um, the benefit fund. Those expenditures have increased. Um, on Monday at the council meeting, we're going to look at the renewal for the health insurance. Um, but that's budgeted. Um, it's around a five point, I wrote, I typed in here five point one. We've increased it to about five point four because we do partially self-fund um, the deductible down. Um, to what five hundred single one thousand family. Um, but there have been a little more, few more expenses like. With the self-funding, so we're going to increase our amount for that. Um, dental insurance will increase about five percent. Vision will stay at the same. Um, life insurance will stay the same, but the premiums for the longer disability will increase. Um. The mod, the our work comp, our mod factor did go down a little bit. Uh, we look to see a decrease in about. Two thousand dollars in, in work comp, which doesn't seem like a lot, but it is a step in the right direction. Um. Local option sales tax, we estimate that bring in um around two point five million dollars in revenues. Um, we do transfer twenty percent. The local option maintenance fund and um, we do, oh, we do pay a lot of debt service out of local option sales tax. For different bond issues and that's around one point three million dollars. Um, spend, we'll discuss the capital. Um expenditure requests after, after I finish this. Um, and we, and there's a separate spreadsheet that shows the capital expenditures. Um. The is, the other um special revenue funds like library gift fund, we spark fund, um Carnegie library fund, those. All have revenues that are designated for specific use. So like all the money from the library gift fund or the least foundation. Uh, that has to be spent like for the library or for the rec center. So those are all all budgeted separately as well. And in the case of the town front building. And the Carnegie, um, home town heritage pays for the wages over there, but the city pays for the building upkeep and maintenance and utilities. So we do transfer some amounts um from local option sales tax into those funds to cover that. Um. For the debt service levy, um, we'll pay for a couple different um, bond issues out of the actual levy. Um. There is, let me see here. So the two thousand thirteen B bond and the two thousand sixteen Geo bond, out of all the debt service, those two are the only ones that are on the levy. The rest are paid out of. Global option sales tax fund. Um, sewer, the sewer fund transfers around a hundred and sixty thousand. The debt service to pay for uh, two thousand thirteen bond and then those transfer around a little over a million dollars. Into the sinking fund to pay for the bond payment for the, the sewer plant project. Um, the levy rate. Let's get to the important stuff here. The levy rate, um, we estimate that to be on. Seventeen point nine eight, nine four five um, per thousand valuation. That's a decrease of just. A little under a cent uh per about hundred thousand or per thousand valuation. It was, it's this year twenty-two, it was seventeen ninety-seven. This current year, it's seventeen ninety-nine, so and this year it'll be seventeen ninety-eight. So it'll be about the same. Um, and like, like we said earlier, the assessments that just came out from the county, that is not going to be on this year's tax. Um, you won't see it on this year's tax, it'll be next year. Um. So we did, we were, we were able to keep the levy rate um about the same for this year. And that does take away the two positions. Um, from dispatch, which is about twenty-five cents on the levy rate. Check that, sure, but. Yeah, it would be about, it would be around twenty-five cents on the levy, so.
And then last point, but uh, please note levy rates can decrease after publication, but not increase. Uh, I did want to go back and just talk a little bit about. Uh, health insurance. Um, Skip will be here uh Monday from uh North Risk Partners. Um, to talk about her current renewal. Um, but we've also been having conversations about a new product. Uh, product being insurance plan uh that he has been developing. Um, it. Was a little bit too tight. It's, it's difficult because the insurance carriers don't want to give quotes until March. But we need them in January and so it's always been very difficult to be able to make uh decisions about insurance. Quickly. So um, for that reason, um, I think this, this next year will be good timing. To really be, take a look at that plan. Um, it's also a good time because we'll be renegotiating with both of our. Unions on uh their contracts as well. So we'd be able to mesh that in. Um, but it's. Kind of a, I, I would call it a deconstruction of insurances. We know it in a reconstruction. Um, that's in my opinion more transparent uh and saves employees' money, saves. Uh, city taxpayers' money uh and gives the same product to our employees. So um, we're gonna be spending the next. I guess by now, eight to nine months uh. Honing in on that plan to really study it uh with not only city council, but we really want to make sure that we. Spend time uh having some focus groups and intentional conversations with staff to get their input on. Uh, how this plan would be different and uh how it might affect them or uh benefit them, things like that. So. Um, just a heads up, but just from kind of the numbers that Skip showed us this year of. What it would be if we started July first, it was a very significant reduction. Uh, for health insurance costs. So um, it's, I hope going to be a very viable option. For us come July first of twenty-four. Gives me some hope for the future of uh our levy rate uh reducing uh and being able to balance out. Maybe some levy uh benefit fund levy with debt service levy uh while still reducing our overall levy rate, but. Um, definitely some good outlook on that. So more to come. I know very little about. Insurance, that's why we have skip, but any high level questions on that?
There would be a lot more um, education needed for the employees with this plan because there, there are a lot of different like moving parts. There, like if there was, there's, there's probably disappearing deductible that if there is a contract that. So like say there needed like, I mean, your knee replaced or an MRI on your ankle or whatever. If you went to a certain ortho, then there might not be any deductible, but if you went to one that was not, did not have a contract with the insurance company. Then it would be irregular deductible. So there would be like a lot more education needed for our employees. But I think it would, you know, being an employee myself and having insurance, it's like, you know, yes, I want to save the city money, but I also. Concerned about, you know, how easy it is for, for me and, you know, our coworkers to have insurance. I think it would be very good for the employees after, but they're just going to need to be some more education on, on how it works.
I can hardly understand how insurance works. Cause I get. If I go to the doctor for something, I get four different statements and then a week later I get other statements and. I just usually wait until the lowest bill comes and I pay that. That's, that's how I usually work, but.
We've got some projects going on like upper sharing housing grants. And I'm not seeing anything in here where we're funding whatever our.
Yes, so when we started that pilot program, we set aside those funds. A set dollar amount for the projects. Um, so kind of when those pilot program funds are expended. We'll come back and have a conversation, but so far I think what we have in the pipeline, uh, we're good. Uh, for those projects.
Do we have? I thought that there were a couple of grants that were pending.
Yes, um. Yep, and that came out of that initial pilot fund balance transfer. Um, so the Tin Pig Project has a grant. And then Monday night will be uh considering approval for the Nudger's Upper Story Grant as well. Yep. Yep. You bet. So, yep.
The other big capital projects like wastewater treatment plant, the downtown project, different, different things like that. Those are included. In their specific like capital um improvement funds. So they're in there, those are in the budget. Yes.
Yep, um, and well, and then this is, Suzie and I have had. Much conversation of how we want to build this out. Um, so this is kind of our first year. Go at it as far as are these our, you know, annual local option. Purchases and projects or these large capital project planning and um, so that's something that. Over the next year, we're gonna be working out to be able to better show and communicate. Hey, here's our five million dollar downtown reconstruction. Here's Bateman Reconstruction. Here's our Willis Avenue overlay project. Um, trying to think of what else. Big projects, but wastewater airport so that we can show those and communicate. Hey, this, this is planned in FY whatever and uh. So you can see this is a five-year program. Um, we don't have everything on here. To uh the Nats rear end. Um, but you can see like the recreation department. Did budget out some larger capital projects. Um, so I think we'll be spending the next year. Uh, working some of those out of how does this. Capital improvement planning integrate with our budgeting process and our uh. External communication to the community about what some of those larger projects are. So um, this is kind of. Step one, figuring things out when we also integrating a new budgeting. s- step one figuring things out when we also integrating a new budgeting system with, I budgeting twice this year, um, so it's been, it has been a long year so far, I think, for Suzie and I, so.
What is the status of our level of life sales tax? Is it gonna remain with us?
Today?
Yes.
At this moment, yes. Um, I believe, uh, that it is in the crosshairs of the state eventually to take that over and use that to supplement their lack of budgeting ability in the future. Is that appropriately politically correct way to say it?
It was one point two, then it was one point five, and now it's two point five.
Yeah, um, so it's, and, well, and so the, the, the last time I looked at it, which I try not to look at it often for my own emotional and mental wellbeing. Um, they wanted to set a specific year, and I think it was like FY twenty five would be a minimum amount. So whatever we collect in FY twenty five, we won't get less than that. For, for twenty five years or twenty years or something like that. Um, so it's kind of, you're not gonna get more than that probably either, so.
Well, we're using a lot of logistics that, yeah.
Yeah, and I think Suzie, Suzie put it in here that, um, if we had to, uh, replace what we use to pay debt, it would be a three dollar and seventy three cent increase. So if the state makes that decision, the state will, and it's not just Perry, the state will increase levy rates across the state. Um, I think my additional grant would be that that local option sales tax is just that. It was decided by the citizens of our community and every community in county across the state, that they wanted to impose that upon themselves for the benefit of their community. And it's my opinion that if the state comes in and starts to take that, that that is going directly against the will of voters, which in my opinion is not appropriate.
All I have to do is think back to what, what they told us and what they've done with the back bill.
So. That's, that's that.
And I agree, I absolutely agree.
Yep. I feel like council member shot would have different words for. Thank you. I try and, uh, speak my mind as neutrally as possible. But sometimes I don't, but anyway, um, I can go through capitals line by line. Or we can just kind of have the highlights, but, um, again, like I said, we're gonna try and continue to build out future years so that we have a better understanding of what's coming instead of just, hey, I want this this year and this next year. And just year by year, we can build a better plan of exactly what we're doing, so.
I was gonna say, I have my question on the capitals. Um, like the garbage department, why do we have a new way garbage truck?
Yeah.
You, it's gonna cost us four hundred and sixty thousand dollars. We're budgeting for capitals this year, two hundred and twenty four. So we're taking out a loan for that vehicle.
So the fun of new, um, new spreadsheets. So the project total, if you go to police department, which is page two, you'll see police interceptor replacement, three hundred and twenty five thousand dollars. So every year we have just put in that we are replacing a police interceptor. So that is the total for those five years of police interceptors. So that five, five hundred and fifty thousand is for the purchase of a two hundred and fifteen thousand garbage dollar garbage truck in FY twenty four. And then in FY twenty seven, we would be buying another garbage truck. But the plan would be to, um, do like a three-year note, like we usually do for vehicles. So it'd be about, I think, somewhere else, I thought, and maybe I didn't click the right button. I had, uh, budgeted out about eighty thousand dollars a year out of local option for replacement of garbage trucks. So it just kind of shows up and you'll probably see it like cemetery mower replacement. There's, you have three years of mower replacements, so that project total is the total for the five-year CIP of that line item. And then the F purchasing now, the FY, yeah.
The three-year note or five-year note.
The, the FY twenty four column is what we're looking at for this budget year's expenditures. And kind of not a hundred percent for FY twenty five out, but just more of a, this is what we're thinking type of deal. So. And I've kind of told staff, focus on that upcoming fiscal year and the following fiscal year as like the most sure of what it is that's coming. Those three, last three years are more of the kind of question, you know, look, two years ago, we were paying forty five thousand dollars for a police interceptor. We have no idea what that's gonna be five years from now. So some of the CIP is kind of just placeholder, um, but definitely that FY twenty four is what we're looking to approve for this fiscal year, so. Um, so Monday night, wanna, so again, with issues of acquisition, uh, at Monday night's council, we're going to ask council to approve FY twenty fours capital projects. So that, um, I know specifically Josh for that garbage truck has until Monday at six thirty, uh, to get our name on a garbage truck that we could get in like six months instead of twelve plus months. Um, and I know, I think with Van Wall, we have soft commitments on a few items that they would probably like more firm commitments, um, on as well, as well as just being able to start planning those, uh, materials and, uh, uh, project planning and things like that, so. Um, probably, I guess, a few of the highlights, um, Legion Hall renovation, which months ago, I forget, last fall, uh, John Anderson sent everybody an email kind of with the plan on that. Um, obviously the garbage truck, um, I have probably, um, you'll note the first Parks Department item. I shamelessly put one of my projects in Parks Department lines, but a synthetic ice rink for, under the solar pavilion. Um, in addition to that, to kind of subsidize that, uh, we'll be doing some fundraising and grant writing to hopefully get that going, but that amount is, um, synthetic ice rink with a, uh, in gate enclosure around it and ice skates. So, um, a lot of details to work out on exactly how that will work. But, uh, I think it's one of those community building things, uh, that will be a nice asset for the community to get to enjoy, um, tentatively, um, thinking about opening the night of the lighted Christmas parade through winter sometime, whenever that makes sense. So, um, I think we've always talked about having an ice rink, but you always depend on the weather with that. So, um, it'll be nice to not have to worry about weather. Um. That's right. Um, let's see, for the rec center, um, the spa and pool, um, need updated to meet state code, um, so we're budgeting for, um, the design work to get that going. I know there's been a lot of inspections and conversations with, uh, the state. Um, one thing with, uh, public works, which is roads, bridges, sidewalks, the F two fifty, um, the airport had requested a plow truck, an F two fifty. Um, but in conversations, we felt it would be best to put that new truck in public works since that's where it will get kind of the most need and priority. And then they will take one of their newer-ish trucks and transfer that to the airport. Um, so that was one thing we kind of changed around. Um, overlay project obviously is a big one. Uh, one, I don't know if Josh wants to talk about it, but, um, they want to, Public Works wants to start budgeting, uh, money to be able to do concrete repairs around town on some of our streets. Um, so that'll be some of that stuff, uh, that I think with Crew now, they'll be able to do a lot more work in-house. Um, so that's basically just, uh, budget for concrete. Um, so that'll be exciting to see, um, uh, STP funding and design engineering for the Willis Overlay Project. Um, so that is going to be, uh, kind of hopefully bid around the time that we bid our twenty twenty four overlay project, um, to hopefully get maybe the same contractor with really great prices for both of those projects. But that will be overlaying, is that from one forty one to West Third? Okay, so, uh, so that'll be a really great project, improve the quality of Willis on that. Um, those are some of the, some of the exciting ones. One, uh, kind of thing that has come up a couple of times with some of our, uh, weather incidences is that when the power goes out, um, all of our traffic lights go out as well. Um, so there is twenty three thousand, three hundred dollars budgeted to put battery backups in the, uh, first in Willis, first in one forty one, and then the Hy-Vee Ace Hardware Entrance Stoplights. So that when the power goes out, I think they'll just go to red flashing, correct? Yep, so, um, they'll go to red flashing until, uh, either the batteries die or we can get out there. But there's times power goes out in the middle of the night, that's a call out for our staff to go throw up a stop sign for the power to come back on to pull the stop sign. And so, um, improve safety, uh, and lessen burden on our staff, so. There's a whole lot in between all of those, so if anybody has any questions, comments, concerns, words of praise, let us know. But we're want to definitely give a shout out to all of our departments. Um, there's budget can be fun, it can also be grueling and a lot of not fun. Uh, but definitely appreciate the work and the thought that everybody puts into their budget each year. Um, and I feel like especially this year, the, uh, with, uh, EOS process and being able to have more transparent conversations and, uh, everybody fully understanding our budget situation and things like that. Uh, for one of the most screwed up budget years, I feel like this has been, uh, probably one of a lower stress.
Really? Just a question, we upgraded software from the process, yes. Did that work well? Yes, it kind, yes, and I think next year is gonna work even better. This year, there was a lot of like, you had, you know, preloading of like information into the system. Um, so it did, the, the operating budget worked well, um, payroll, the, you know, personnel budgeting, um, there'll be some kind of cool reports, you know, from that. But it's like, there was just, it's like, it was a learning experience. But yeah, I think next year is gonna be even better and then we'll be able to do more presentations. And then there's the whole like portion of it, which the projects that we can get started on too. Um, department heads, do you agree? Better?
Good. Um, and one thing this year, probably maybe even, uh, after Monday or after the full budget is approved, I'm going to do some editing after some feedback for those capital, uh, requests. I'm just gonna open that up and it'll be open from like May through December. So, um, department heads will have that whole time to be able to get in and put things in as placeholders and kind of start to feel out longer-term plans instead of a September to December, what used to probably be November to December process, uh, will now be more spread out, hopefully more thoughtful and more time to be able to put together longer-term plans. So it was a lot this year, uh, transitioning to that software and having to input all that. Having it budget ninety percent done, only to then find out, oh, go ahead and wait and sit on your hands for a month and a half while we figure this out and then have to redo the budget. So everybody clap for Suzie. And bring a six pack of seltzers or ciders to Monday's council. So. Think that's all we have. Like I said, Monday night, we'll be, uh, asking to approve the capital request so that we can get started on some of that stuff. Um, it'll probably be that same resolution type that includes, uh, authorization and go after any grants or the approved, uh, stuff like we usually do every year, some. Or we'll do that, so, uh, that'll be a thing, uh, coming up, um, and then what is this, April twenty sixth, five PM, right here, right? Five PM for the, yes, Jeremy, put that in your phone with a thirty-minute reminder ahead of time. Um, for the budget hearing, uh, where we just approve all Suzie's work. So.
I just want to say thank you to Suzie and Stan and, and all the department heads for, um, doing a, a great job. Again, I, I know it's not easy. Like Stan indicated, I think it's, it's both exciting and a challenge every year to, to work on the budget. And I, I. And I, you know, I really, really appreciate the fact that. You know, we, we fine tune this a little bit every year and, and we're looking long, longer range out, like how many mowers we need the next few years, this kind of stuff, so. So we, so we have a good idea, kind of budget accordingly as time goes on. And then we didn't have to raise our, our levy rate, so a lot of good work and I know it's not easy, thank you. Anything else on the budget? If not, we, we stand adjourned at ten, not having to look at business for us, thank you. Can you help me do that check when you get a minute?